I was going to say, good evening. I'm not used to afternoon meetings. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. Today is Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, and it's just four o'clock. And we'll start with the pledge, if you'd join us, please.
.....................................................................
Thank you. Roll call, please. Randy?
Trustee Kitta?
Here.
Trustee Winslow?
Present.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Marks?
Present.
Treasurer Johnson?
Here.
Our critaries here, and Supervisor Durand?
Here.
Staff present is Manager Kangas, Attorney Roger Zappa is here, our Planner Zoning Administrator, Jason McCarthy is here, and our Planning Commission Chair, Jim Johnson is here as a committee member.
Okay, thank you for that. For some of you who may not have been to our meetings before, I'll give you a quick synopsis of how this works. Tonight's meeting is to look at three items. There should be agendas at the back of the room. There's also kind of a disclaimer that I'm going to explain. This is a special meeting, which means we are allowed to make motions. If this were a work session, we would not be able to make motions. So because we're conducting business tonight, this is why it's called a special meeting. If you're here to listen and learn, that's great. If you'd like to speak, you can speak a public comment shortly. And then you can also speak again at the end of the meeting. You can reserve time on an agenda item. If you'd like to speak on, say, 5A or 5B or 5C, you can come up to the podium. Tell me that, I will put your name down. And when that time comes that you can speak, you can speak then. So you actually have three times you can speak during this meeting. We don't have any back and forth between the public and the board. In the beginning, the public is allowed to speak. Then the board can comment on that, and then we get into the meeting. So this can be kind of confusing. That's why I'm kind of explaining it a little bit. Jason will be providing a presentation on the first item. And then you can speak if you choose to reserve time. And then the board will discuss it. And we'll do the same thing for 5B and 5C in case you wanted to comment on either of those. You have a three-minute limit, and Randy will put the timer up when that happens. And I think that's it. So if anybody wants to use the first public comment, please come up to the podium. And if you want to reserve time on another item, you can also come up now. And I'll write your name down.
Hi, I'm Mick Bach, 397 Bishop Woods Road. I'm one of the owners of the Heritage Silos Project. I'm here not to make comment, but just to answer any questions if you have when an original item comes up.
Great. Thanks, Mick. Okay, anybody else? Wish to address the board before we get started?
Hello.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Sermon. I'm a resident in Oak Hills. And I'd just like to reserve the opportunity to speak during the 5A if necessary. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Brian Turner, also a resident of Oak Hills. I'd also like to reserve time to speak on 5A, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jan Keshmarsky, 22 White Oak Drive. And I'd like to reserve time to speak on 5A.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Andrew Sander, 55 Oak Hill Drive. Just reserved a time for 5A.
5A, okay.
Dan Adamini, 50 White Oak Drive, also would like to reserve time if necessary for 5A.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Anybody else? Okay, then we will go ahead with our meeting. We need approval of the agenda.
So moved. Or?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, first item up, policy discussion is 5A. Consider the application for the MNRTF development grant.
Hello.
We can hear you, Jayce. You're good.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon to the residents that are here. Set the time out of your day to spend with us. Appreciate that. We're looking at, can I have the clicker?
Okay. What?
Powerpoint that I sent you.
Okay, let me load that for a second here. I didn't get that, Jayce, right away. Just be a minute, folks. I gotta get that up here. Show up sooner. There it is. That one right there, Jayce?
That's it.
Okay. Get it loaded up. Download it, and then I'll open it. It'll be easier. Slow computer, unfortunately.
That's okay. Time for new ones.
Okay.
Hey.
All right.
Now, is this gonna work?
Turn it on, Jayce, so it's again?
So the gist of this presentation is to present a grant opportunity for the township to pursue. And as you know, we've used the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant program in the past, both acquisition and development grant opportunities. And this one is a proposed collaboration between ourselves, Marquette Township, and the Trail Network, and the Superior Watershed Partnership. I'll get into the details of that in just a moment. Next slide, please. So the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund was enacted in 1976. Basically, a trust fund was set up to allow the capture of lease revenues, industry royalties, and mineral sales from state-owned oil and gas minerals. And those are put into a fund that allows communities across the state of Michigan to apply for both land acquisition and/or development projects for recreation. Next slide. And since 1976, the MNRTF has awarded more than $1.1 billion in grants to help improve communities across the state. And each and every county in the state has received at least one grant in that timeframe. Next slide. So this project has been called the, basically a trailhead project on our Well Road. And I'll get into that a little bit. But the nuts and bolts of this application so far are a 2023 NRTF development grant. It's been, obviously, when you sign up for the website to start the grant application, it comes up as, it gets a number associated with it. So this year would be TF-23-0122. And tonight's purpose is for the township board to consider a resolution to support the grant application. And the request that I'm asking the board for tonight is to consider that grant resolution and the project as a package, which I explained to you at their last meeting that I come back to you with a lot more detail in putting this together. So both the Recreation Committee and Planning Commission supported this project unanimously at previous meetings and recommended to the township board that they consider it for approval and then, obviously, getting it together before the April 1st deadline so that we can be considered for the award. Next slide, please. So this is the action program found in our recreation plan. This is a plan that's updated every five years to allow eligibility for these types of grant opportunities. So we don't do long-range, short-range planning in a vacuum. These are born, these projects are born by community input, community surveys, and collaboration with other entities such as the NTN or anybody that's willing to work with us. So this project has been in the plan since, I think the last plan we adopted was in 2021 or 2022, as we amended it for the proposed acquisition of the property up on top of Venture Drive, which we were unsuccessful with. So the Rec Committee being the group that they are, they wanted to pursue another grant this year, since we weren't awarded one last year. We started looking through the list, and knowing that we already own the property that the proposed project is planned for, it made it a low-hanging fruit as far as trying to, you know, execute the project. Next slide. So the proposed location of the project is where the star is located. I'm gonna step over here just for public's information. So this is Grove Street. This is South Vannen Boom. This is the Wellhead Road entrance. There's currently kind of an informal, unorganized parking area here. It's been used by North Tower Academy with a greenhouse previously, et cetera. So the idea here was to relocate a formal trailhead along the Well Road in this area here. So Marquette Township owns this property, this property, and this property, and all the way down to our southern border. The city of Marquette has a few parcels that they own in the township, part of the Hartwood Forest property. The Adamini family owns an adjacent, looks like 20. And Lost Creek Cattle Company owns 80 acres to the east of the Oak Hill subdivision. City of Marquette's here. The two trails that we're looking at are the off-road trail that comes from the north and the West Gray Walls Trail. So just for reference, I'll go to this side. Just for reference, this is 90 acres away from the Oak Hill Estates subdivision. About a half mile. And this is approximately 1,200 feet off of Grove Street. Oak Hill Estates is actually further away than we are off of Grove Street. Just for distance reference.
Where's the Wellhead up now?
The Wellhead? The Wellhead Protection Area?
Yeah.
I'll show you that in another slide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's south of here. It's south of here. And the wells themselves are down in this area here. Next slide. This is the Marquette County Equalization Department's handy-dandy online parcel report. So this shows, again, the parcel that the township owns. It has a parcel XID number. And we also own the 30 acres adjacent to that. So the township has 60 acres between those two parcels abutting the city. Next slide. This is a zoning map in the area, so I wanted to point this out for our residents here. So basically, the whole southern half of Oak Hill Estates and the area south of the proposed location is all protected by your Wellhead Protection Area. So it's a very restrictive area, you know, not gonna be digging any basements. Not gonna be carrying more than a little handheld gas can across this area. You know, it's there for our benefit and for everybody's benefit that utilizes township drinking water. So I just wanted to show also that this property that's adjacent to Oak Hill Estates is also zoned real residential. So there is a potential if access was acquired. It's not currently acquired, except for these two parcels actually have access to Grove Street. But I believe the Adamini parcel is landlocked. I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure. So this is the Well Road here. This is forest recreation zoning. We actually went through an exercise a few years ago to protect all of the Hartwood Forest property that we could by rezoning it and creating a new district that only allows recreational land uses. And that was in an effort to preserve that property for recreational purposes only. Next slide. So this is a, basically a conceptual rendering of the location of where the trailhead's proposed. Again, this is Grove Street up here. This is the existing off-road trail. And we're looking at, you know, tying that into the West Gray Walls Trail. In fact, we're looking to actually channel everybody into the NTN-signed trails only. We're not trying to direct people up into private property that has a historic trail network on it that you probably all enjoy. That's not the case. In fact, we're trying to mitigate that by having a central location where people can go and then jump onto the existing NTN trail network to the north or to the east and south. Next slide. I guess I might as well just stay over here. As far as the conceptual site plan, so this is very rudimentary. This is required for the grant application. This hasn't been refined or... I mean, it does cover the scope items that we'd like to see. So you've got parking for 48 vehicles at the moment, two handicap spaces. Emergency vehicle parking, we'll get into that in a little bit. Proposed dual-sided pit vault toilet right here. Informational kiosk with maps, educational components to trail etiquette, things of that nature, to educate people about where they're at so that they're not wandering out to the west and up to the subdivision and private property that they shouldn't be. They should be on the public property that we own where the trails are located. The NTN-signed trails only. Pavilion bike repair station, couple benches scattered throughout, and a pump track. Pump tracks are very popular with the children. This isn't anywhere near the scale or size of what's being proposed, what's existing at the 550 location. That's a much larger trailhead.
553.
553, excuse me. Thank you. And the pump track, like I said, is a cool feature. Teaches kids how to, through shifting a weight, how to maneuver around different obstacles. And they'll be proposing to move the gate to the rest of the well field to this location here, or somewhere along those lines. A small sign here saying, hey, turn here. This is where the trailhead is. And of course, we'd have some signage along here saying, don't go any further than this. So essentially, opening up this area a little bit for our residents and visitors. The most of the trail, are the trails, NTN trails, that they have, whether it's north or south, are located in Marquette Township. Next slide. So again, these are the projected scope items. Crushed gravel, parking lot, couple benches, a bike rack, pavilion, recycling bins, trash bins, vault toilet, signage kiosk, six-foot pathway constructed to meet up with both ends of the trails, and a playfield slash pump track. Next slide. The proposed budget is as follows. The grant amount requested is $90,000. Total matching funds for this project are $60,000, with a total project cost of $150,000. If successful, this would be the highest match that I've been a part of since I've been here at 40%. We usually hover around 25% to 33%. So this is a significant increase in match, thanks to the generosity of NTN, putting up $25,000 in cash, also putting in $10,000 for labor and materials in-kind match. And the Superior Watershed Partnership has also offered $10,000 in labor. A lot of this stuff can be done either by ourselves or working in conjunction with NTN. I'm also asking the township board to support the project with $15,000. As I understand, we receive marijuana distribution dollars from the four licenses that are active for sale of medical and adult-use recreational products in the community. As I understand, it was around $100,000 this year. And I know that the township board has budgeted some of that towards matching funds for projects such as this. So that is an ask as well. That is part of the resolution that I put in front of you for your consideration tonight. Next slide, please. So anticipated project outcomes. We're trying to improve access for people to utilize the trail system. That is a world-class system, highly desirable. And we're trying also to distribute users around the system so not having everybody go to County Road 553's trailhead, but distribute them amongst the system. Guide users to NTN-signed trail network so that they're not... While that gets into further, but additional place space for children/parents slash the pump track. We have had some reports of trash issues and dumping down there. I think anytime you have more activity in an area or just consistent activity, it should thwart some of those issues. Mitigate the use of other non-NTN trails to the west. So by channeling people, it's kind of like the same as Sugarloaf. If you didn't have a trail going up Sugarloaf, you'd have people milling around all over the place and degrading that asset. So what we're considering here is a trailhead that directs people directly into the NTN's network. Improve sanity along the Well Road. We've heard a number of stories about, you know, people walking their dogs on the road or having some issues there. So if everybody is able to go and park at a spot and take off on the trail, which is for hiking and biking. NTN is not exclusive to mountain biking, regardless of what people say. They do allow hikers and bikes. And in fact, NTN has mentioned that if the project was to move forward, they would consider constructing other trails to the east of the road that would be for walkers and hikers to try to separate out those users. The user issue is, it's a national issue. It's not just a NTN issue. Separating users is one of the best ways to do that, so that's an opportunity as well. Improve access for emergency vehicles. There are injuries that happened on there during different races or just throughout the year. Obviously, this would provide a central point for emergency services to get to those people. Obviously, there's a beneficial mutual partnership with the township or with NTN and the township. This is a different scenario than the, NTN going to the city, asking to buy a piece of property so that they can develop a trailhead. We're trying to work with NTN to allow them to utilize our property in a way and develop a trailhead that benefits us all. And finally, there's, you know, this would provide public access to NTN trails in perpetuity, guaranteed access to those trails. So once our property like this is established, according to the DNR, there are some cases of conversion, I'm sure, that have been utilized before, but you get penalized for something like that. So we would prefer to keep this as a park for a long time, forever. Next slide, please. We've received some letters of support, strong support already. Michigan DNR Trail Section, RNR Heritage Rec Authority, NTN, of course, Superior Watershed, of course, but QPAD, LSCP. Township Business Association recognized the benefit. Our Township Planning Commission signed off on it. Travel Marquette, and finally, the city of Marquette. So that's encouraging. Next slide. And then finally, through some of the concern emails that I received, there was some safety issues that were brought forth above Grove Street, the lack of a bike lane. I understand those, and I appreciate you letting me know those concerns. That's probably a different project. The township is very active in trying to grow our non-motorized trail network or transportation network, period. So whether it's a pathway along Venture Drive that was a safe house for school funding project, or whether it's just working with MDOT to put a pathway in front of the Westwood Mall, we are active in that, and we would certainly be open to asking the road commission, who owns and maintains our local road network, to consider, you know, some kind of a wider shoulder in the future for any maintenance projects that go on. But one thing that we may be able to do, and this was kind of a recommendation by the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission supported the project with a couple caveats. And that is that the board would consider perhaps a realignment of the varied ingress and egress here to align it with South Vannen Boom. That is an access management principle that increases safety. You don't have offset turning movements occurring. And the speeds are obviously a concern here, too. So understandably, that is a safety concern. I appreciate, you know, it was, we kind of knew that, but we appreciate hearing that from our constituents as well. And that's something for us to consider in the future. Next slide. So that's my presentation to you. That's the gist of what the project is. I wanted to let the board know that we have received commentary. I have personally received commentary from several residents in the Oak Hill Estates subdivision. One was a phone call, a nice conversation. And the other were emails that I have forwarded on to you, or at least to the supervisor. And hopefully, you received those so you can hear the same sentiments and comments and concerns that I'm sure the residents will make you aware of. Other than that, if you have any questions or comments for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we prefer to hear from our residents.
Randy?
Yes, sir.
Is this project all within township property?
It is. Yeah, can you go back to that parcel? Couple more. Yep. It is. Yes, sir.
Got a few points, Jayce. Can you briefly talk about the agreement we signed with NTN a few years ago about the trails in that area?
Yes.
And how protected they are.
To my understanding, the NTN was provided a license to develop trails on our property, similar to the way that it's done in the city. And I'm assuming by now, you probably have a couple other agreements in place. Essentially, no trails will be developed on our property unless the township is made aware of it and that they're approved by the township.
Restrictions on cutting trees and brush and moving.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. As far as grubbing and stuff, I think it's nothing over four inches in caliper, things of that nature. So this, I just want the public to know also that this is the trail layer that I received from Matt Cos from the city as far as NTN trails. So there's only two that we can tie into. One is the off-road trail, and the other one is West Gray Walls. There may be a myriad of trails, and I'm sure there are, and have been up there, probably unbeknownst to you. Not as much as I should be, but hopefully this summer we'll get added here. But this is private property. You guys benefit from a longstanding tradition of benevolence from whoever these property owners are. I think this is the Combenzis, Mr. Adamini, perhaps Mr. Camilli, if you're getting down to the old way. to the old wagon road. But you benefited from that, you know, over the course of the years. A lot of people have. And we're not trying to disturb your backyard, but the township owns this property. We're in, we've had the habit of putting solid recreation projects together, and we think that this is far enough away. In fact, you know, when this is discussed at the Recreation Committee level and then getting to the point where the Recreation Plan is approved and becoming part of the master plan, I really had no, I mean, this was kind of blindsided that you guys would have that level of concern. And so hopefully you understand why. You know, this is for you guys to enjoy. We're not trying to put people, you know, drop a trailer or a truck full of bikes off and have them go up the hill. Now, if you guys get down to the trailhead and want to utilize it, that would be fantastic. But we're not trying to send anybody to the west. We're going to have archways, just like you see at County Road 553, and get them into the trail system. Now, will there be people that perhaps, you know, mill around in this area? Perhaps, but I think that's been going on for some time and we're hoping to mitigate that. That's the best I can tell you by having a central location, so.
You know, it's funny, we, all municipalities go through recreation master plans, transportation plans, regular master plans, and you see it on TV, you see it in the paper all the time. Please come in and tell us, you know, what are your concerns? What would you like to see? And invariably, nobody shows up until something happens.
Until it affects.
That's why we ask. We want the input. The city's doing that right now. They want input, you know, so people need to, and the county just went through that, too. Ernie?
Looking at the map there, where the Marquette Township property is versus Oak Hill Estates, what's the difference, distance between the, to how many acres or?
Ninety acres or half mile. As the crow flies.
Couple other things. It's also possible that when we submit this grant, it could be rejected, too.
Yes. Yeah, we were successful with the last one. However, trails and trail connectivity and trailheads are highly regarded at the trust fund level. If you look through the awards from the past five to 10 years, if it was along the RNR Heritage Trail, it would be like done. But this isn't, but this is still part of a regional trail network, and that's what, that's where you get your points on the application.
And sometimes we have to spot do these because of the timing or whatever's happening. And at some point, you know, the whole idea is to connect everything. I know when Commerce Drive was put through, everybody said, "Well, it's a road to nowhere." But it is a connector. And like we are in the process of doing the non-motorized trail connectors, you know, the sidewalks, if you will, along the sides of the roads, those take time. So at some point, these trails may all be connected, north and south, and going to Big Bay or whatever.
Yeah, the tunnel under the highway was a DNR development grant opportunity compiled with the MDOT grant that we received. And yes, people say, "Well, that's crazy. Why would you put a pathway in front of the Westwood Mall?" Well, eventually, they'll be able to get from Bishop Woods or perhaps the Oak Hill Estates if they went through Bishop Woods to get to our restaurant and entertainment district if they wanted to by utilizing the pathway that, any easements that are in place to get to that area safely. And yeah, we're just trying to do what the public has told us what they wanted, which is additional trail networks, non-motorized connectivity in the community. So this is another example of that. A different flavor, but yet another example of that. Mr. Marcus, did you?
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, can you can talk a little bit about the grant process, the timeframe, what everybody can expect to see?
Sure. So the grant application is due April 1st, which is essentially the Close to Business Friday. I hope not to work on it Saturday. And there'll be a review period. As you noticed, the grant number was 0122. That means there's 122 applications so far, and I set up the application not knowing whether the township board is going to support it, but I at least wanted to get half of it done so that if you guys move forward with it today based on commentary that you received tonight or today, that at least there's a portion of it complete because they do happen quickly and decisions have to be made. There'll be a review period if it's submitted throughout the summer. They do a site visit typically. The DNR comes up and Mary Karlock is our grant representative, and she will do a site visit and she'll invite me to explain the project or perhaps Lori. We can all meet out there and discuss it. And then the grant, the trust fund board goes through and scores these projects based on a number of criteria. And then we would find out probably in late December or mid-December of this year whether or not we are awarded. And then we would have two years, if awarded, to complete the project. And it's a reimbursement process. I should also add that. So, you know, the township spends the money, does what they, you know, what we're saying we're going to do, and then the DNR reimburses us for those expenses.
And this is, MNRTFs in Lansing or somewhere? This isn't a local board, just so people know. They're somewhere downstate.
Yeah, they're based out of Lansing.
Who had your hand up? Dan?
Would there be any type of signage for the users to please stay on the trails? Anything like that right at the trailhead, you know, so they know? I mean, I think bike users and walkers and everything else are pretty good about that, but.
Yeah, I'm not a big proponent of putting up a bunch of signage everywhere.
No, just maybe at the trailhead.
But I think a central kiosk that has a map of where you're at, some educational components about trail etiquette, and certainly, you know, stay on the DNR or the, on DNR. The NTN-signed trails would be not out of the question and something that we've already discussed.
Are you kind of talking directional signs to Dan so that they don't get lost off in another?
Yeah, just to keep.
Trails or something?
What do you have on the, because there are other trails in that area, what do you have directing them throughout the trail network to stay on the main trail?
Yeah, most of the NTN network is well marked with arrowheads across it. What you'll find when you get off the network, we don't have the ability to sign on private property, you know. So I think what you're finding is people, if they do choose to park in the informal area currently, there's nothing directing them to a trail. So I think what happens is people wander down the Well Road and wander off on the first trail they see. And I think that's where some of that traffic that may not be wanted is happening. What I like about this trail design is you see the parking is all off the road and the obvious direction is to take people onto the trail, in the formal trail.
I guess the landowners would always have the option, if another trail, not the NTN trail, is going on their property, they could put some signs up just to let them know that they are on private property.
They could. They could, yeah. Yeah, I'm not aware, and those folks here from Oak Hill can correct me, I don't know that they have any permission to access from Oak Hill connecting to the trails currently. So I don't know if that, you know, that could be a longer-term goal, if that's wanted or not for the connectivity, but, you know, that's one thing when, when a lot of trail systems, I think over time, we get used to using private land and use it like it's publicly available, right? The open door policy in the UP has been pretty prevalent for a long, long time, and as we see more and more development, that loss is huge when it happens, you know, when a development goes in and doesn't consider the access that has existed for a long, long time. Just something to think about as other developments happen, that access is built in, so we have the connectivity that people are seeking.
What else? Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We had, I think, three people come in after I was explaining that if you wanted to come up to public comment or up, make a comment on any of these items, and I don't remember where they were sitting, but if you would like to address the board. You were on the list.
If I may.
Well, hang on one second. I just want to make sure that the people who came in late know that they can come up and speak. I just need to know your names. Go ahead, yeah. Just come on up and give us, you want to start?
Oh, don't be me.
You can. Because some of you came in late, pardon me, and didn't hear that you weren't allowed to speak. That's why.
Hi, my name's Katie Turner, and really, I'll just, all I wanted to say is I'm a supporter of the No Camen on Trail Network, have been for years. Also grew up in Oak Hill and lived there as well. And I guess the just, the connection, the main connection problem I'm seeing is it seems to me that we're using township land and township money for what I see is a benefit to the Marquette city population. Is just the perspective I have from that, I utilize those trails. I appreciate that they are less used, I guess, than some of the other trails because it is steep to get up there, and people use them for all sorts of activities back in that land. You know, there's hunters on public land, people use motorized vehicles, people like snowmobiles, dog walking, and just historically, I've seen in other areas, my daycare was on the trail network in town, and for years, people walked dogs, like you said, you know, they had permission from neighbors and stuff. And then when more of the mountain bike use came in, there's, tends to be some times like aggressive behavior against that. They don't like motors. They don't like people walking dogs. They do not like hunting. And I just hate to see like all that utilized land use just end up going to, you know, really aggressive mountain bike use for better access for city population. I guess that's all I wanted to say. My perspective is of having a trailhead in the township.
Okay. Thank you.
Reg Strahan from 265 Bishop Woods Road. I guess I don't have to bend over if you can hear me. I just wanted to voice my support for the trail system. I see it from kind of a different angle. It's great for us folks that live on the south side of 41 up in Bishop Woods area. I may not want to ride my bike all the way down Grove Street to get to that trailhead, but I might drive down there. And I see it as a, as another reason to want to live in Marquette Township. You know, it's good for economic development and hotels and want to try to connect everything to the trail if at all possible, but it's, and it's just a benefit all the way. And just wanted to let you know, thank you for considering this and your application.
Thank you. Who else was late that didn't get a chance to put their name down? Anybody? Okay. So let's start, was it Mike Sherman? Did I write that right?
Mike Sermon, yeah.
Sermon?
Sermon, yeah.
Thank you. I would like to say also that I've been a longtime supporter of the NTN, a user of the mountain bike trails myself. And so I just want to, you know, thank the NTN for all the work that they've done over the years and the work that's been put into the project thus far. I'm sorry, I'm one of those people that wasn't aware of this project until it was in my back door, right? But I guess, you know, in general, I'm in supportive of projects like this, and I may be in support of this particular project, learning what I learned here today. My greatest concern and the ask that I have for the board is to think long-term about this project. You know, being a part of this community for a long time, having friends that grew up in other areas that have been impacted by the NTN trails over the years. Case in point, Shyrus Hills, lost a lot of the access that they had to the wilderness in large because they lost the ability to travel through that area on their four-wheelers or other modes of transportation, walking their dogs off-leash, et cetera. And I have, like I said, great respect for the NTN, but I hear that there is a tendency for a creep, so to speak, of their span of control. And I heard, you know, the point about this being about access to two particular trails. Well, at the same point, talking, already talking about expanding those trails in that area, which Katie pointed out, is used by members of the community for a vast number of activities. And so my ask of the board would be to consider putting into place some measures that would prevent the creep or the, what was mentioned, just this, I hesitate to call it a sense of entitlement, but of land ownership of that area. And sure, they can manage it, but it's also managed by the people that use it now and have, you know, a mentality of low impact where they're not leaving their garbage, they're picking up garbage they might find. So there is already a management of that area. And I heard another point about benefiting from the private property that borders Oak Hill. I might be mistaken, but I'm pretty sure the Michigan law allows access to public property as long as it's not posted. So, and that is limited by motorized vehicles and et cetera. It's pretty much limited to foot traffic and hunting and stuff, but that, I don't really see that as a concern. Like that property is there for everybody to use, and I don't, and I really don't see, I don't see that. [car horn]
You get the gong.
I didn't expect you to use your full three minutes. I love the gong. But that, but really, that's what I ask, is to think about the long-term impact that that project could potentially have on access to other, other activities that are already being, that area's already being utilized for. And please, 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 put something into place that would prevent expansion and ownership being basically handed over to, you know, another organization that has, that is a bureaucracy. It has no, has no voted, no, we have no ability, once they take over control, to make a change. It's all handled by them and in their own interest, and that's, and that's their job as, as that organization. But this community isn't all mountain bikers. You know, we're a community of a lot of different people who like to take advantage of the outdoors and different aspects, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Turner's up next.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for hearing the public on this matter, including my comments last week, Mr. Kang's and my discussion with Mr. McCarthy. I appreciate that. I'm going to echo some of the set notes already discussed here, but I and my family have been members and donors to the NTN since we moved back here in 2014. We'd be hard-pressed to find another organization that's done as much for the community and commerce as the NTN has, and we are all grateful for the ongoing efforts towards trail access, maintenance and preservation. My appeal to the board when considering this development revolves around finding the balance between expansion and usage, as I think some of my fellow township property owners have expressed tonight. In recent, in recent years, increased access and usage has made, have made many other sections of trails congested, and longstanding users of those trails have not only been made to feel unwelcome, but have been harassed doing the activities they've been doing for years, in many cases predating the NTN's existence. I think the comments by Katie and Mike, as well as the actual presentation by Mr. McCarthy, highlights the fact that there is a congestion problem and there have been conflicts due to that on other trails. Mr. McCarthy said that he needs to redistribute some users, in which case this is a proposed way to do so. There have been increased altercations and conflicts surrounding trail usage, leaving many conflicted on whether to continue to support ongoing trail efforts. This is a scenario we all hope to avoid with this current Well Road trailhead proposal. The South Trail System has been in existence for many years and has supported a variety of usage in a very congenial manner, like Mike just described. With the development of the South Trail's trailhead on 553, access and usage has increased dramatically in recent years, and in my opinion, offer and in my opinion offers an experience different from other trail systems in the area that have become increasingly congested. The access to the area that we're talking about and its remoteness is somewhat unique and requires a bit more commitment from its users. But my argument would be to embrace and preserve this for the betterment of the entire system in general. As I mentioned during last week's meeting, there currently exists access at the proposed well road site. Since vehicles aren't allowed past the first gate, many users walk in and use the well road without the threat of vehicular traffic. This would cease to exist under the current plan. With the current usage, there exists a sustainable balance by those who access these trails from other access points and those of us who have direct access from our homes, notably Oak Hill, Forest Hills, Van and Boom, Grove Street, and in some cases Bishop Woods. Can I continue after the gong?
I'll stop, I'll stop. That's so, don't go.
Okay, thank you.
How much more?
Have it up though.
Have you got a lot?
I appreciate, I appreciate. Let me continue. You'd be ashamed to disrupt such a balance that has proven to be a nice experience for all, especially when it could have such a negative impact on township-specific residents. We certainly understand the time limitations given an upcoming application deadline. However, an application deadline, while currently very inconvenient, should not be a reason to disregard these concerns and just proceed. Unfortunately, many whom have objections at no fault of the board have only recently been made aware of these development plans and are unable to be here to comment during, due to spring break or other work obligations. Therefore, in light of the recent objections, the appropriate course of action would be to postpone the application submission in order to have more discussion with township residents whom would be impacted. There's no harm in delaying this project in order to assure is entirely appropriate and/or proceeds responsibly. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, appreciate it. Leanne, you're next.
Leanne Keschmarski, 22 White Oak Drive. I really share the sentiments of what has been previously stated here today. I've lived in the township my whole life, grew up here, raised my family here. And, um, before there were any of those Indian trails in this area that we're talking about today, those trails were all maintained by people who were four-wheeling, snowmobiling, walking, whatever, in this area. And now we don't have that access anymore because of those trails. And I'm not a mountain biker, but I mean, I'm not against it, but I do miss being able to ride my ATV back there. Um, and I hope I don't lose the access to walk my dog. So I would ask that you think about that or like Dan brought up, maybe some type of signage. Because I know you said that there's like a half a mile between the, where the proposed trailhead would be and the subdivision. However, where, where the trail goes, there's lots of avenues to get up to where we live. And case in point, I run into people when I've been walking back there who have been lost and I've helped direct them back where they came from. Um, one day I was dropping something off at a neighbor's house on Oak Hill Drive and a lady stopped to me. She was walking with her dog and, um, she was very upset. She was lost. She had parked her car, um, down, you know, on the well head road, on the well road. And somehow she ended up in our subdivision and she had no clue how to get back. And I felt bad for her. I, you know, um, I tried to explain to her, but she wasn't understanding. So I just said, "Well, would you want to, do you want to ride?" So she got in my car with her dog and I drove her back. So there are people who wander in and there's so many trails. And there's one that's marked, somebody put up a beautiful sign. I don't know who did, but it says Oak Hill Loop. I mean, it's like, "Oh, this sounds nice. Why don't we take that?" I think you're going to see a lot of that. And my family is raised, we're going to retire, we're probably going to leave. But when I think of all the new families up there, because our subdivision has turned over. We've got all these wonderful young couples and kids that east ridge, um, all of those houses. There is a trail that runs right through their backyard, all the way across. And that is accessed on, on several different points coming up. And there are people back there. And I mean, if you had a young family, I mean, your kids should be, should feel safe in their backyards and you shouldn't have to worry about somebody coming up on those trails. And yes, it can always happen, but with this being part of the NTN, that's going to be publicized. It's going to draw people in not only from, um, out of, I mean, out of the Marquette area, but maybe out of state. And then you, you, they could come into those neighborhoods. So I just express that concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Andrew? Was it Soder or Sander? I can't read my name. Sander?
Yeah, thank you. Andrew Sander. I'm going to use the full three minutes because I want to hear that sound. Uh, I just want to clarify. I had heard that, um, the NTN needed approval from the planning commission for any expansion of the trails. Is that for the user agreement? That was just?
Uh, for them to develop new trails on township-owned property.
Right. So there's no new trails that can be developed here without the permission of the planning?
That's great.
Okay, thanks. Um, and I, I don't, I live at 55 Oak Hill. I don't have direct legal access to the two-track or, or NTN trails. Um, so this has my, me questioning my access, but, um, uh, thanks for this discussion. You know, I was originally, uh, kind of concerned about a couple of things with this project. One was the future cost to the township, um, for operations, future costs related to any, and intersection improvements and just general basis of deed for this trailhead. Um, as I understand it now, NTN is taking over operational costs for this site.
Hmm, not necessarily. There may, it'll be an agreement worked out.
Okay.
But this is your chance to speak. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to your points.
Yeah, I get 10 seconds and enough. Perfect. So I'll, I'll add to that at the end then. Um, it sounds like, you know, the broader intersection improvements, like there's not going to be a four-way stop there, aren't going to work. Um, and, and then reading the rec plan, this has been developed through sort of broader township input. So I guess I'm in favor of the project even though I may not drive there, um, and use it, but I see a benefit to the greater township and regional use. Um, I'd likely use it on, use the trailhead on bike rides, hikes, snowshoeing or ski outings. Um, if I bike to school with my kids, we could come up to well roads and help to Grove Street, right there. So I like that it's, you know, directs the people to existing NTN trails. Uh, the trails that run behind our neighborhood are, you know, over a half mile away. So I'm not, I'm not concerned with, I guess, people coming in my backyard and everything. Um, I would make the, maybe the following recommendations, um, I guess, just with some of the kind of ongoing concerns at trailheads that I've seen in the south. Um, I guess consideration of video monitoring if issues arise at the trailhead. Uh, I would recommend increased signage from NTN, um, on the shared use nature of the trails. I haven't experienced, but a lot of people, um, that, you know, have experienced, you know, some rootness on the trails when they're using it for walking or things like that. So I'd recommend that promotion aspect of it. I'd also encourage coordination with the road commission regarding, you know, any improvements to the Grove Street quarter. The, the shoulder is really terrible. There are increased, there's a number of increased houses on that stretch. Um, there's one going in right now. So there's more driveways, there's more used by bikers, walkers and motorists. So just general what can be done with the road commission to improve the shoulder in any way is probably a question. And that's it. Just the gong.
It won't gong, yeah.
He wanted to hear the gong.
Oh, too late.
Okay, thanks Andrew then. Dan, you're the last one.
Dan Adamity, 50 White Oak Drive. Um, conceptually, I really, I like the idea. I think it makes sense, uh, to access the trails to the east. My concern, I think echoes some other concerns, uh, I continue to maintain some trails there through the good graces of Bob Cambenzi, who owns the 80 acres, you know, and with permission of, from him, uh, maintain trails and the, uh, access to County Road, uh, HJ, what we called the Plank Road. You know, the combination of Oak Hill and his properties. So most everybody for, since we moved up in the seventies have accessed the road via that trail, um, with the permission of the, of the landowners. But my concern is, you mentioned the connectivity. I can see the day that, okay, using that county road to get to Lake Enchantment Road. And my concern is the same as others, that those of us who've been using these trails for many, many years, whether it be walking with our dogs or riding mini bikes or four-wheelers or snowmobiles to areas that are not part of the, the Trail Network, could be stopped from using these things. Um, because historically, the concept starts that we're all going to get along, we're all going to use the trails and it's going to be wonderful, but that has not really been the actuality. I fortunately have not had any personal experiences, but I've heard secondhand from people who've had negative experiences with, well, we're all supposed to be here, but not everybody. Once you get access, wants to share that access. And that's been, you know, mentioned, so I'm not going to dwell on that. My concern is the people, my kids and grandkids who are going to, you know, grow up there, continue to have access to the trails that we've had without being kind of booted off. Again, bikers and dogs don't always mix well, but people who are walking their dogs can control them. But we've had experiences in the past where, you know, they don't belong here. You don't belong here. These are our trails now. And that, the signage, that this is multi-use, you're not the only ones here, that I think does go a long way. Because I do see for future connectivity, using that county road, which is logical because everybody can use it. The county is not going to turn that into a road, but it's county, you know, right now everybody's using it. It would be a shame if people are no longer allowed to use it. Uh, you know, thinking for myself, of course, but I won't be around that many more years, but my kids and grandkids will. And I would hate to see that, uh, you know, the prohibition of some of these other uses that have been, you know, in place for over 40 years now. And that's my concern. So I guess, thank you. A gong on.
Gong on.
We made it there.
Yes, sir.
Can I make one 10-second comment?
Okay.
I'll make it very brief. Uh, it's been repeated several times, so I just want to offer some clarification that the trailhead access, uh, that these trails are a half a mile from Oak Hills. That's, that's actually not true. There, there's a snowbike trail that's, I think, I believe it's part of the city property, um, between the two areas. Uh, that's within 500 feet of the neighborhood and backyards and personal, private property. So there are other trails that were not included in the township's property that exists there too. So that, that is part of the expansion we're concerned about as well, understanding that you guys are the township, not the city. But it's all obviously interrelated.
Thanks. Yes, Jason?
Is that it for public comment?
Should be.
Can I make one more? Well, there's two minutes at the end you can take.
If it's 10.
Clarification about, uh, future approval of additional trail development. Um, it's been noted multiple times that the NTN would have to seek access from the township. However, there would be a significant amount of property back there not owned by the township, but owned by the city of Marquette. And obviously that would be what, outside of you guys' jurisdiction. And I think that's part of the, the issue or concern that we have, that, that, that aspect of it that's been communicated as within our, your current control is actually not in your control in the future.
Yep. If you can clarify the public, private ownership, that would help too, I think.
Yeah. Well, I'd just like to say, uh, I agree that this is all worth discussing in more detail. God, I hope my lid was closed there. And I've learned a lot by listening to your comments and it, it's helpful, okay? To know your concerns and what they are. I understand that there may be a winter trail on the city of Marquette's property.
It goes right here.
Okay, so that's on private property?
No.
It's Camille's property?
It comes up right at this corner.
County Road HJ.
It comes up as the city.
So even more so, that's a public right-of-way that has not been abandoned by the road commission. And to Mark's comments, um, you're supposed to not have your dog off-leash. Michigan requires positive control. I can see where that would lead to some conflicts on the trail with other bikers. Unless this property is in the Commercial Forest Act, which I don't think it is, uh, that's, that's trespassing, basically. You're allowed, nobody has policed that for years, okay? But the only way that you could have access to that laissez-faire is if the property is in the Commercial Forest Act, which allows hunting, fishing and hunting.
Look at a plat book. It's marked CFR.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Jason?
That's great.
So the current, the current Commercial Forest Act regulations, it's hunting, fishing and trapping. Those are the only three activities that are allowed on commercial forest land. A lot of people think it's open-door policy to those lands and that has caused a lot of confusion over access. I know there's some efforts in Lansing to expand the definition of what recreation is allowed on commercial forest lands. But just so everybody knows, hunting, fishing, trapping, those are the only activities that are, are allowed on commercial forest land unless there's permission for other, for activities.
Regarding that, like for safety purposes, that, I know that there are people who hunt and trap back there and with, I mean, that's pretty close. There's definitely a man who rifle hunts.
You have to be 450 feet away from any structure to hunt.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm, I don't know if the peo, people who utilize the mountain bike trails are always aware of that, like how close they are to these, this network of trails versus the ones over by the ski hill and stuff, that they could come across a stranger and just add to for your safety.
Typically, we post during hunting season, encourage people to wear bright clothing. I mean, it's up to, yeah, it's, it's up to people to know where they are and where they are recreating. Um, I know signs are always great. The more signs you have, the more clutter you have.
Yeah.
The less attention signs get. It's really a, a hard balance. Um, but yes, we've got, we've got a lot of ex-
Probably having a trailhead there, you would attract more little kids and stuff that can't physically bike from the other trailheads.
Yeah, and it might be, that might be a good intercept point that we can put, these are the dates and there are some lands that might be open to hunting. In the city, within the city boundaries, hunting's not allowed. In the township, it is a bit different. Um, the other thing that had come up by, about the motorized access, is there regulations on the well head? We always, we always-
Private road.
No, for ATV motorized access. We always get the, the blame when motorized is restricted in areas. But I think there's always other, or has been other things that have predated some of that access. Just so you know, I, I grew up motor, I used to be able to ride my motorbike from, by Bothell Middle School all the way. And I used to ride back a year. I was a little bit too, just saying. But there are some other things, like the well head, I think, has some restrictions on motorized now. And then on the, uh, the older railroad grade out by the city, which has been a concern, which, which people have been upset about motorized access, that had to do with the pipeline going in. And it wasn't, it wasn't us as NTN, which if you guys are members, you're all NTN. We're always looked at like this, I think I heard bureaucracy. We really aren't. You know, we've got a volunteer board. Um, and, you know, I'm hearing a lot of, uh, conflict, altercations and conflicts. When that happens, I'd love to hear about it. Usually the only things we hear about are off-leash dogs are a big thing. Um, and other, some other minor things, but a lot doesn't get back to us. So if there are issues, I'd, I'd love to hear about it because I can't address it if I don't know about it.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you for your comment. I heard something about entitlement. I'm going to try really hard to be tactful here, but, um, you know, the folks that live in the subdivision, you have a one to two acre parcel of property. And there is the possibility of this being developed in a residential fashion, uh, or developed period. I live on Northwoods Road, enjoyed a beautiful swath of woods between my place and the highway and a Subaru dealership was built there. Subdivision behind me came unglued. How could you let this happen, Jason? The property is zoned for that, okay? So we can look at, work with, I mean, as a planner, I want all of our constituents to be connected to the trail system in some fashion legally. There's planning booklets out there and things- There's planning booklets out there and things that we've looked at to try to secure easement, to get you across private property to the trail network. As it stands now, this is private property. This is private property. This is public property. This isn't going to go anywhere. The city's not going to do anything they can't through zoning. The township's not going to develop any of this, other than for recreational purposes. And this is a half-mile from any structure in this area. I'm not saying there's not other infrastructure, trail infrastructure that's close here, but the, the proposed project area.
My, my point was that there are other trails inside of that half-mile distance.
Correct.
And I think that, I don't know the dimensions, but I'm looking at your plan, that, that proposed trailhead is very comparable in size, very comparable in size, to the other trailhead, to include restrooms, which the other one doesn't have, right? So I think it would be, I think it would be naive to assume that the increased traffic isn't going to wander into other areas. I, that, that's my point. And, and the entitlement, and the entitlement comment, I, I, I didn't mean to ruffle any feathers by saying that, because I agree, I own a, you know, one-acre lot, I don't, I don't think I own that property or have special privileges to it.
Yes, sir.
But the access that we do enjoy to it, I'd like, I, I think everyone who uses that property as it exists today would like to see that continue and not be hampered in the future by a very powerful organization in this community and in the city, that there, it, it is a bureaucracy in the sense that it's easy to say, well, if I don't hear about the problems, there's nothing I can do about it. That doesn't, that doesn't mean they don't exist.
Okay, yeah. I, I appreciate your comments. We're looking to tie it into one or two trails here on the, on this network. It's, it's quite a distance removed from, I mean, actually, these residents are much closer. This is a private road. This is a road that serves the wellhead. We're at, we're, we're talking about opening it up to a certain point to the public to improve access to our trails.
But out from that road, Jason, there's, there's multiple trails that come right into the subdivision.
And we don't have control over that, and neither do you, quite honestly.
Yeah, I, I realize that, but it's just a, a safety concern with who's going to be on your back door.
You do have control by opening, allowing access, and essentially some floodgates of more users.
Yeah, and-
That's the only point I think we're trying to make.
Yeah.
That's your control.
Yeah, and, you know, we are embarking, and you may have heard on, that there's a larger planning effort happening for trails across the entire county. We are trying to look at an expanded trail plan footprint for this area. And a lot of the increased use, there's a lot of things that contribute to use. Over twenty percent increase in trail use just during the COVID year, and that level is sustained. You know, a lot more people are mountain biking. We used to work really hard to get mountain biking recognized as an activity, right? Like, mountain biking was a very obscure thing in the past, it's grown tremendously, it's been embraced by many, many people. There's probably many mountain bikers in this, this room. The mountain bikers are kind of spearheaded a lot of the trail development on behalf of other non-motorized use. We've got campgrounds that have gone in, other commercial developments bringing traffic on. You should be aware, there's another campground going in at the west end, past Morgan Falls, where the River is expanding their footprint, which is going to bring even, you know, more traffic to the trails in general. So looking at opportunities to create more miles a trail across land that exists for recreation is amazing. This landscape right here, that we have, the city and township land available, or the outdoor experience, is, is absolutely, absolutely amazing, because this doesn't happen in many communities. If you don't travel in other areas, this, we, we have the gold-level access for trails. This is, this doesn't exist in many, many places. So just know that what we have here is, is amazing, and I know it doesn't fit in everybody's narrative.
That's right, we're trying to preserve it, and you just-
And, and-
You presented it as an expansion plan.
Providing amenities and interception points to educate people is super, super important. Because we have such tremendous access, and people do get onto it from neighborhoods unmarked and other areas, that it makes it hard to intercept and educate everybody that's on the trails. I, I'm sorry, I can't help the rudeness on trails, because I've, I'm determined there's a ten percent factor across all human, humans that recreate in whatever way possible. No matter what we tell them or what we encourage in the way etiquette, you may still have a bad encounter. And it's really hard to set that aside when something happens, because I've, I've been there. I've been walking with city commissioners and been told to fuck off. Excuse me?
She's walking.
Walking with city commissioners, talking about trail access. That doesn't, you know, it's, it's, it's a hard thing to have that interaction and keep it positive, right, or turn it into a positive thing. So just be aware that I know it happens. I'm not saying that it doesn't happen, but if it's not brought to attention, I absolutely have no ability to engage on a level to try to educate or bring those incidences to attention, right? Like, it's super important. We will have conflict. I don't care what we do, there will be some level of conflict, because people don't always get along. Users don't always get along. We'll try to do what we can to provide this, this great resource to the community, and it's amazing. We've got the township here that's actively engaged in building support facilities for this trail network. That doesn't happen everywhere. We had to buy ourselves trailhead. We're funding vault toilets and expanding the parking, because it is this great asset. I'd rather that money, I'd rather us be focusing that money on trail expansion, but those support facilities are, are important too. So people have a place to go to the bathroom, they have a place to get educated, they have a place for their younger kids to hang out at the trailhead. That little pump track of the south trail probably has more miles on it than the rest of our trail system, from those little guys going in circles. You know, it's, it's, it's a good thing, and I, I, I know you're here because you want to protect your, your backyard, right? This is your backyard. But from a higher-level perspective, this is everybody's backyard. You know, this is, my focus is our local population. The tourism becomes a benefit of what we do. We have a great place to live, we have a great place to recreate. These amenities and these partnerships are critical to supporting this infrastructure that we have available for us.
Thanks, Lori. Appreciate it. Dan, was your light an old one, or did you have something else?
It's an old one.
Okay. John?
I heard it mentioned on multiple occasions from multiple people tonight, that other uses are being pushed out. And I want to be perfectly clear that NTN isn't necessarily the reason why some of these uses get pushed out. The wellhead protection area, single-handedly, is what's forcing the limitation of motorized uses in that area. We can't allow heavy motorized use in our wellhead protection area. So when it's township property, we have to keep it out. We can't have overturned side-by-sides leaking fuel all over the ground. Our agreement with NTN limits the amount of fuel they can have in their machine at one time for the same reason. So anytime a vehicle goes in there, it has to be authorized use. During COVID, we actually had to do a little more prevention to keep an increase of motorized use out of that area. And a lot of it is new users of that type, not knowing where they can and can't go, so finding out by discovering where they can and can't go. I was that kid once. I, I've had four-wheelers most of my life. I moved to Harvey, where you can't drive one from your home anywhere. So I don't own them anymore. That's just my personal experience. I'd need to be clear that snowmobiles and side-by-sides in the wellhead protection area are prohibited as you enter township property. We don't do anything about it beyond our property. Beyond notifying people that they're entering a wellhead protection area. Dogs off-leash, as Jason stated, is against state law. We actually have a sign on our gate on the well road that's in conflict with that, because over time, we've respected that most people do control their dogs, but we're seeing that becoming an issue as well. And fifty percent dog owner, fifty percent dog, depending on the situation. That situation is, is becoming an issue whether NTN exists or not. The walking trails that everyone is losing were never, never designated trails. NTN took an effort to create trails and get them designated as such for multiple uses, and that's officially what we have on the books. All of the other trails, if there's ways we can protect them for certain uses, I think that's probably where we can find the biggest win, in my opinion, especially on township property. So if we designate certain trails not for mountain bikes, that's an opportunity. If NTN agrees to build walking loops for those people, a win for that area. Those are the things I think we should look at, and we also need to continue to educate users on what isn't allowed in certain areas for what reasons.
And that's the hardest part that we deal with every day, is how do we communicate? You know, we've got a Facebook page, we've got a website, we post up on the door, we try to do email blasts. If we don't have your email address and you want to know about a blast, we've got a safety forum here tomorrow night. You all know about it, if you looked at the website. We have to figure out how to communicate with people, it's an ongoing battle. We have the discussion all the time. So, the board has heard from the public, the board has heard from staff. I'd like to hear from you. Comments, questions, motions? Go home, or what? Ernie?
I have a, writing down what people say, just a few comments in that. Reason I ask, the planner asks, the distance between the two of them, which is ninety acres or half a mile, depending on how you look at it, it's good or bad. I don't know how you can say one way or another, but just looking at the map, there's, there's distance in between there. But when you look at the ownership, Lost Creek Cattle Company, Adam Eady, how long is that going to stay up there as-is? Someone's going to come along with enough dollars, say, I'd like to buy that property. And these individuals are going to look at it and make a decision. So you don't know what that's going to end up with. Have no idea at this point in time. So what you're using that land for right now, it could go away tomorrow, very quickly. You don't have any idea in that, so. Looking at the future, I think it's, it's a win-win situation for the township overall in the long run. We are a growing township in all different areas. We, as a board, don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, next week, or next year. Things come to us after they commit to the planning commission or something like that. Then we find out a lot of stuff, or from coffee or something like that. But that's about the extent of it. We try to do the best we can, looking towards the future and that. To me, I'm looking toward the future, how much longer I'm going to be around to do some of this is another question, and that too. But we're all in the same boat. We have to look at long-term for our residents, not only now, but residents coming into the future and that. Far as continuing, retaining control of that area, it's our property. This board can set the controls today, tomorrow, next week, a year from now, whoever's setting up here, and all of a sudden, we're going to change it and that. We can only go with what we know right now and move for the future, and hopefully it be retained by future boards and that. And signage, signage is great, and people follow it. I think if you look back as to what some of the problems, what people are saying in that, they're not following it. Greater percentage is new, but you only need one, like they say, five percent could create the problems for everybody. So we do the best we can in trying to get the word out for all that. I'm looking at future residents in the township. What are they looking for when they come here? Right now, we, we can project out in the future as to what has happened in the past and what's happening now. What they're looking for in the future? We don't really know. We can just go by what we know now, and hopefully that's going to follow through in that. And they talked about individuals coming in and then coming into your area. They got lost and everything else and that. I don't know if this is still true or not, but Lost Creek, if you're familiar what that is, they made an opening to Heritage Trails in one portion of it. I don't know why they ever did that. How many of those people in Lost Creek are going to go out to Heritage Trail and use all that? And you stop and think what that can do for that community down there. I don't know if they closed it off or not, but they did put it in there, and I found out, but I couldn't believe it. I asked the questions, I never really got an answer. So whether it's still in existence, I don't know in that. So it's, it's a little things like this here. I'm looking for the future and that. I look at the distance between the two, and I'll be honest with you, looking around here, how many of us are going to be here another ten or fifteen years and that? So we're looking this further, this further.
I hope so.
But you're, you're in the minority right now. But you're looking toward the future. That's what we, as a board, have to look at, as a township. If we don't do this now, we've got this property up here, what are we going to use it for? It's just going to sit there? It can only be used for certain things and that, because it's in the wellhead area, you can't do much with it and that. So I'm just looking at what's best for the township now and into the future at this point in time. I've said enough.
Okay, John?
I think, for those that are with us in the audience today, I think you have, would have to agree that you've been given a wonderful opportunity and all the time you needed to indicate any concern that you've had. We've had a presentation from our planner and the committees that he's worked with, and they've come up with as much information as they can provide so that we can make a decision. I think everybody's had their opportunity, and I think that's one thing that you need to appreciate as you sit here today. And I think we're ready to move.
Okay. Anybody else? Carl?
I just have a couple of comments I'd like to echo. You know, that section of Grohl Street, when you're heading west, when the sun is setting and there are bikers on the shoulder of the road, that is the most dangerous section that I'm aware of anywhere. I mean, it's terrible, there's no shoulder, they're in your lane, and you can't see. And so that's the first thing. Secondly, as far as conflict is concerned, I was one of them, I was able to enjoy the trails that Dan grooms back there, and I love skiing on his trails. People would go in there in snowshoes and walk all over his ski trails. I mean, it's like, what in the world? And then tear his signs down and throw them away, you know? So I, I don't know. I, you know, people will be people wherever you go. But I think the signage thing would be a huge thing, especially like they do on the snowmobile trail. When you are entering areas that are private property, you're, they tell you, you know, you stay on the trail, you don't get off, because you are in private property. And so that can be posted on the educational part of that, at the kiosk area there. You know, that you need to stay, everything that's uphill from here is private property. You don't need to go up that way, stay on the trail. And I think that will alleviate a ton of problems. And everything else that could go wrong with that, we need to continue to monitor, as far as litter, trash, vandalism in the bathrooms. We have vandalism at our lion's field here, so, I mean, we, we just have to monitor those things as time comes on. But we'll do our very best to make it the best thing we can for the community and to protect those who are already there. So my comments.
I just want to say that when we sent the survey out and asked people what they wanted, what they wanted was recreation. So let's support what the people wanted. And I know my grandchildren will be on those bike paths today, and they're already on them. Okay, so that would be my comment.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to support the application for the MNRTF, I had to read that, folks, Development Grant. Due April first.
Anything else?
Do we have to indicate the dollar amount that we're going to contribute towards that?
Um, excuse me, if you say by resolution, that that would cover the-
By resolution, yes.
Okay.
Approved by resolution.
Yep.
Okay.
Support.
Okay. Anything else? Questions, comments?
One last comment, Lynn.
Sure.
If I was the residents, and I'm, I'm not down in that area very- If I was the residents, and I'm, I'm not down in that area very often, but if, you know, those residents down there, I would be more concerned with losing those two parcels, the Lost Creek Cattle Company, and even Mr. Adam Eady someday, if he would sell that. I mean, that's property you've used for years and years, and then, like the treasurer mentioned, someone could come in tomorrow and buy that, and it'd be gone. I mean, so, I mean, but it, that's, like, at my own personal property, there is a lot behind myself, and there was a duplex that may get put there, well, I bought it, so it didn't, couldn't get put there. So maybe that would be a concern of your area, just to try to shore up that property for future use, you know?
It is a concern.
Yeah.
There's already a subdivision drawn up.
So that would be my comments, is, you know, the, I think the township trailhead is, in my opinion, probably far enough away from your area, and it's going to be directing traffic to the east, not directly to your area. So that, that would be helpful, but, like I said, if you want to shore up that area where you have the luxury of using those trails now, I would try to purchase that.
Go ahead, Jason.
Can somebody confirm this, just real quick? Is...
Oh, Jesus.
That's an easement. Because there's already a subdivision drawn up to be on Lost Creek, and that is how they will access it.
Just from that location?
Maybe also off of Grohl Street, but that is an access point.
Jason?
So I work for you, my constituents, okay? If something does occur in that area, and you find out about it, and you want permanent access to the trail network, please come and talk to us, because we can work on doing that, whether it's before sale or after sale. I have heard nothing, and I hear a lot, but I have heard nothing about immediate sale of that property. But even if it's ahead of time, you know, the well, not the well road, there's a motion in the second on the floor, so we can talk a little bit, but there, the Fly Ash Road, which came onto the township's network north on 550, there was a private property owner that just purchased that property, and we had to struggle and, uh, to get in contact with that owner, because not only does it have the NTN's main vein for the snow, uh, the ski race, the North Country Trail is on that property, which is, that's a multi-state national trail. And thankfully, through the benevolence of the property owner, understanding what his goals and objectives were, and having those conversations, we were able to, and it's in process of securing a greenway corridor through that area south of the Fly Ash Road. As a township, or a nonprofit, if you will, we do have the ability to work on those types of things, so we want you to have permanent access to the trails, regardless of whether or not that private property sells. And one of the things that makes that property so valuable is the proximity to the trail network. So if, if it does happen, please let us know, and Lori and myself, or whoever was here, will assist you in securing an easement, a proper legal easement.
John? You had the, your light on? Or is that an old one?
That's an old one.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion on the floor, is everybody good?
It's a resolution, yeah. So, resolution roll call will be trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Kida?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Rattari, the Aston Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you for stimulating discussion, folks. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay.
I can hear him, Roger.
What's the, what's the agreement with the city market?
Okay, next up is to consider the Heritage Silos LLC PUD development documents. Nobody asked to speak on this. Roger, let's get your, do you want to start, or is John?
I can. You have no idea the number of hours that have gone into the documents that are in your board packet.
I do.
This is probably draft seven, I want to say, of the PUD agreement. But a formal written agreement is necessary anytime you have a planned unit development, and this is designed to create some latitude and flexibility that strict compliance under your zoning ordinance, in the zone it was originally zoned as, couldn't afford. So it offers some zoning opportunities that couldn't have occurred on this property otherwise. But in order to accomplish that, it requires a very detailed document. The developer of Heritage Silos LLC has an attorney, that attorney and myself have gone through this at length. I got this to you, so you can read through it if you wish, but all of the statutory terms and requirements, I believe, are met in it at this point. And that's document one. Just like the 425 agreement that you considered now several months ago for the, another project that's being considered, it has to be signed by representatives on both sides. So the developer has already signed this agreement. It can be, you know, you have the prerogative of if, if we miss something, of adding to it or subtracting from it, but the attorneys are satisfied that the document meets those criteria, statutory standing. The next document that requires execution by this board is a three-party easement between Heritage Silos LLC, the Marquette Gulf and Country Club, and Marquette Township. As you know, you have a stormwater management ordinance, and that requires any new development to comply with and comport with a stormwater management plan. Well, in this instance, the best way to really accomplish that was with some coordination with the, uh, the Gulf and Country Club, and there is a, um... Yeah, basin, I, I wanted to use something a little bit more elaborate than ditch.
Depression?
There's a, there's a retention pond, detention pond, on, that actually is in the city of Marquette, the city of Marquette side of the boundary, where water will drain from Heritage Silos Development, and be collected and accumulated in the detention pond, just like we have detention ponds for the Discount Tire property, and the vacant one behind that. And every new development has to have a stormwater management plan. Why we have a three-party easement here, however, is because the water will not be collected in its entirety on the Heritage Silos property. The Marquette Gulf and Country Club has already agreed to that, has already signed that document, and has Heritage Silos, and the township needs to execute that easement, because it has to be recorded at the Marquette County Register of Deeds office, where it will remain in perpetuity until modified or revoked. The other, the third document is the stormwater management agreement, which is pretty routine, actually, it's, it's customized to some extent to the particular development that issue, but there has to be a plan, and it has to be monitored in, in years to come. That also has to be executed by Marquette Township. Those are the three documents that I requested be placed in your, in the board packet for consideration, and it's my recommendation that I feel they are satisfactory, and they be executed, just so you're aware, and I'll be brief, I know it's been a long meeting, but there are four more documents that we have just nailed down the language on within the last 10 days. There's a stormwater easement that is strictly a grant by the property owner and developer to Marquette Township. It's just like a deed, when you sell a deed, the purchaser doesn't need to sign any document, that's how this document works. It's done, it's actually been executed at this point by Heritage Silos, but it grants additional stormwater management plan easement rights to the township. There's, for example, there's, there's a conduit for water down in the cul-de-sac area that allows drainage to be collected in a storm sewer and drained into the Marquette Gulf and Country Club easement I just referred to. There has to be an easement allowing the township, if it suddenly starts flooding in a hundred-year storm, to go down there and see what the problem is. That's been accomplished. There is also a road easement, because this is going to be a private road, so the township needs the right to come and go with fire trucks, ambulances, and so forth, to gain access to the residences that will eventually be constructed, hopefully, eventually in the short term, be constructed. And that has also been accomplished, there's a, a legal description, there's an easement for that. The final two documents are, as part of this plan, the township intends to assume ownership of the water system that services all of the residences and developments in, in Heritage Silos LLC's property, the water system and the sewer system. Those are very near completion, the water system especially. We need to have an easement that grants the right to access those. Part of these are within the road, some are not within the road, and this was one of the latest developments that we worked out just last week on the language. We need to have basically 10 feet on either side of wherever the plumbing is, to dig it up if it ruptures or if it needs to be done. That has been agreed to between the attorneys as well. Those last four easements I listed do not require township approval here tonight, these are things that your Public Works Director, and the manager, and myself, and Mr. Bonk's attorney have all worked out, and I feel is satisfactory. So, the recommendation from me is to approve, to authorize, the township supervisor and the township clerk to execute the three documents that were in your board plan, consisting of the planned unit development agreement, the three-party stormwater management easement, and the stormwater management plan. And I'm happy to, I know I've given you a lot of information, they're thick documents, some of them, and these have been in the works for quite a while, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about them.
John?
I guess I could ask you, our attorney, is it necessary that parcel A and parcel B be voted on the same time?
Yes, we have a planned unit, yes, it's a planned unit development, and it's one development.
Okay, so it's, it's impossible for somebody to only want to approve one parcel?
I don't know that anything is impossible, it would be contrary to my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Ernie?
I have one question, reading off through this, and I get the owner association and that, and, and one parcel says, "to the developer or successor owners." Are you talking about the developer selling it to multiple people, or is the homeowner's association going to be the, the successful owners at some point in time?
Both of those things, basically. There are, the road, for example, is a critical issue of concern for the township in all instances. So the developer currently owns all of the lots, and the road, and everything within the boundaries of the planned unit development. At some point, you know, Lot 7 will sell, Lot 5 will sell, so there will be individual owners of those lots, but there will be a homeowner's association, that eventually the developer will convey those rights, because the homeowner's association will own that road. So when it gets potholes, like Commerce Drive has out here, it's a private road, Marquette Township will not be responsible for doing anything on the road itself, that will belong to the homeowner's association, to chip in, and plowing, for example, is another aspect of that. So the homeowner's association will be the successors of, you can analogize it to a site condominium, for example. We've had a couple of those in the township, in the developments, in the 30 years I've been doing this here. And the owners own their house, and they own their, they'll call it a unit or lot, but then there are common areas in a site condominium, and let me, this is not a site condominium, it's, it's different, but there are analogies there, where the, where the association has common ownership interests in the public areas. There's also, one of the big things that the planning commission focused on, was required and required, was the recre, was the, the green space, I'll call it, which is designed to be more or less an easement in perpetuity. That's within your planned unit development also, that preserves that space primarily for the benefit of the users of the property, but that will be, as I understand it, and Mr. Bonk is here, he can clarify that, he probably knows this better than I do, because I was looking at it just from certain, certain legal aspects, to assure that it meets our ordinance criteria and the state law. But those will also be common areas, essentially, that can be used for the benefit of those people who eventually buy lots. So they will, in that, in that sense, the homeowner's association, when it comes into existence, will be the successors who acquire those rights, that bundle of property rights in the development, and ensure that the agreement continues in perpetuity, that the, that the agreement is being complied with.
Does that end up being when all the lots are sold, or can it happen before that? Maybe the homeowner's association?
It usually, I, because I've got multiple things like this on my desk, I can't tell you specifically in this instance, usually it will happen not sooner than when a majority of the properties have been sold.
So we would get a copy of that document then, too, to show the transfer of ownership, as it were?
Well, the, the assessor certainly would, because it's, it's just like a deed, for any, any conveyance from a tax standpoint, the, the ownership would change.
If I, if I may, until we actually sell lots, and we have owners, and we elect a board, we'll have a board of directors for the association, even though it's not really a county association, but they're going to drive the bus, if you will, and manage the property. Because at some point, I'm going to sell all the lots, and I'm going to retain one, Judy and I may build her someday, and I'll just be one of 15 lots there, and everybody's has their new space, six acres roughly of new space that everybody gets to enjoy, and actually, the Noki Trail system runs through there right now, and we granted Lori and her group permission to come through there, use the property.
Ernie?
So if I understand this right, that once the property has been sold, that the homeowner's association becomes involved, then the township would be dealing with the homeowner's association for anything that was that, rather than the developer themselves?
To the extent that there's any dealing to be done, yes.
I guess that's what I was kind of getting at.
Because, at least in the, in the initial years, when the infrastructure is new, the township's involvement will hopefully be very little. But yes, that, that summarizes the situation, is they will own, they being the homeowner's association, will be formed at some point, and will have to have, take a collection or have bake sales or do something every time something needs to be addressed or paid for, but that will be their obligation, cleaning up, for example, or cutting, cutting down trees in a windstorm in that green space or a private area, that's, that's going to be their responsibility. The township will have no financial or legal responsibility for those things. The township will have no financial or legal responsibility for those things. The things you will be taking over are essentially the plumbing for the water and the sewer. And let me add one other kind of important point on that. There are still two more documents that will be coming, even after the list that we've talked about, and that's a bill of sale for the water main system and the sanitary sewer system, because the township should not be, really cannot, take ownership of the plumbing until it's connected and fully functional and various inspections and so forth take place. I would anticipate that'll probably be coming relatively soon, because the project is very far along, but we're not in a posture to have that happen just yet.
Okay. Carl, you got a question?
No, I would like to make a motion to accept the development documents and the attorney's recommendation. I'd like to thank the attorneys for the work they've done. There's a mountain of work to get all of these things done right, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay.
I'll support.
John, did you have something else?
Yeah, I have watched with some regret how Ray Poulsen, the architect that has presented this, has taken the shoreline of Marquette and hidden it, the water, from the citizens of Marquette. And now, we have presented to us eight, a proposal that there be eight rental units that I think we should be very careful about having, to have to accept that to allow the rest of this subdivision to be developed. The rest of the subdivision is okay, it's fine, glad to see it. Eight residential rental units designed by Poulsen are no big plum for the city of Marquette, and they're no plum for the township of Marquette.
Okay. Carl? Did you have something else?
No.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in support. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next.
Thank you.
One question. When will these lots be starting to go up for sale?
They are right now listed on RE/MAX's website.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We do have commitments in kind, unkind, I mean, because we can't sell because there's going to have commitments from four people on the lots and then two on the big lots for the cabins.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
So, John, somebody just has to get us an original, or can you use these? You have them?
I have them, and I have a notary seal as well.
Okay, you can witness and everything, and we'll need two witnesses. Okay, thank you. All right. Consider the appropriation request proposal for the Forestville intersection. You can tell by the packet that we just have a blank page there, it should be, just as a placeholder, kind of, we didn't know where we'd be at this point. So, John, do we have anything?
I will be as brief as possible. We don't have significant updated information to provide you at this time. That said, the Road Commission has suggested that they will be the applicant for any appropriation request, based on whatever scope we agree to. Now, what you should know, and this is where I want to be brief, because we don't have any specifics, we are trying to ensure that whatever scope is written for this request includes impacts to the surrounding road network. So Commerce Drive, we've heard plenty of comments about that lately. Can we get that repaved as part of this? Why not ask? Old Wright Street, why not ask? Venture, why not ask? What about the rest of Forestville Road? Why not ask? So, if it ends up being a $10 million appropriation request anyway, why not ask? So, at some point, and it may have to come at your next meeting, we will likely be asking you to consider a letter of support for this appropriation request coming from the Road Commission going to Lansing. That's what I have.
Okay.
It will include improvements to the intersection, to a design level that the experts that be believes can be built and maintained long-term. Does that mean it's going to be what I want to see? Likely not. Does it end up being a solution that improves the efficiency of the intersection? I hope so. I think so. What that looks like, we, I'd say it's still too early to tell, we might get 40% complete plans in a couple of days.
So we might have something for our next meeting?
I hope so. Time is running short on the window of opportunity, so as soon as we have information that we think is ready for you, we will have a letter of support drafted with whatever that scope ends up looking like, and we're going to share it with all of the parties involved, including the city of Marquette, and request they do the same. They may not all be in by then, but even if they trickle in after the fact, I think any additional support is going to be beneficial.
Okay, so the Road Commission met last night for their regular meeting of the month. They won't meet again until April 27th or 24th, I forget what she said. So, you saw the memo or letter or whatever it was that I put in your, I sent to you in, by email, of what I stated last night with them. My initial email to Chair Ray Roberts and the new engineer director Pete Dukes was, could we have a dialogue at their meeting? Which I didn't expect to happen, but I wanted, you know, might as well ask, right? So he said, until, Pete answered back and said, until Wade Trim has something definitive to talk about, we're not ready to do that. And I said, that's fine. I'd like to address, I sent this to him on Friday, so they'd have a little bit of a heads-up, and I said, I'd like to address the issue at public comment then, just so you're aware. So I did read this page to them. They were very gracious, very thankful that I came, and very polite. Before the meeting started, Ray Roberts came over to me and he said, I hope you don't mind that we didn't, you know, we're not going to have a dialogue. And I said, absolutely not, I totally agree. You've got full agenda, and I didn't give you any notice anyway. So I just said, I just thought I'd ask, you know. And he said, I said, I'm just trying to cover the deadline and, and point out what we feel is important. And he said, what deadline? And I said, well, my understanding, and this is what I want John to help clarify, or even if Roger knows, I said, my understanding is that there's money, federal and/or state, that's available, and I don't know, I said, don't quote me, I think it came from Marty Fatanti, and that the deadline is like April 1st to make a submittal, which is why we pressed Wade Trim to do this quickly and give us what they could. And he said, I'm not aware of anything like that, we're looking at regular road funding. And he said, we will pursue that route. And I said, oh, okay. So he said, but I want to tell you, if we have something from Wade Trim, in the meantime, the next time it's going to be talked about will be at the April meeting, 24th or 27th. And I said, okay. And he said, if we don't have anything from them, then it'll be May. So, I'm not sure what angle they're coming from, and I was afraid then that I was misspeaking, because I thought, well, maybe I misunderstood. Ernie and I were talking about this today, and he goes, that's the way I understood it. So, are we looking at two different things here?
I can't speak for Ray. I can only speak for what I know. I would also suggest that Pete Dukes maybe knows a little bit more than Ray might know at this time. The way these things go, with Lansing having such a significant turnover in the last election, a lot of this is being handled maybe in a slightly different way. So the appropriation is what needs to be our focus, and that's what Marty has recommended we do. And the goal is going to be to get a budget and generalized scope, at least verbally ASAP. If some of the details have to be ironed out later than they do, we need to get the attention of the decision-makers. And I think that the initial contacts have already happened, but we haven't given them enough information yet to know what they might be considering funding. So, the process is continuing, it's just kind of getting a little nail-biting at this point.
So we're just going to keep going with what we're doing, and wait and see what Wade Trim comes up with, or?
Keep an eye on your inbox.
Randy?
And yeah, just for the residents, you know, our, again, our number one concern is to make that intersection, you know, safer than it is now. That's our, that's the township board's number one concern, is to fix that intersection.
And that's, that was the end of the, you know, I just went ahead and said, in the 15 years we've been working on, I've been working on the board, you know, we have a good relationship with the Road Commission, we're looking for outside funding, that was kind of the basis of it. So, at the end, I said, I'm asking you to consider joining us in the immediate search of a solution to reconfigure the Forestville intersection, whatever that looks like, and we will do everything we can to help facilitate the search for required funding. So I wanted to, one of the points before that was, I know it's your responsibility to look at the whole picture and the future for Marquette County roads, and to that end, your preference is for a west-end bypass. I understand this is your reasoning. But the problem is, I said, that vision should not be pursued at the expense of an existing problem. The intersection is not going to get any better, and we like to work on a solution together. So my whole focus was to have them understand that our commitment is still to that intersection inasmuch as they've said lately that they still want to pursue the bypass. So, I don't know for what it's worth, I don't know, I gave them a copy of this after I read it, and, so that's all I know.
It was always my understanding also about April being a deadline.
For you?
Well, that's got to be the bigger pot of money then. It's not conventional Department of Transportation or whatever monies, MDOT, or that they would be pursuing.
Interesting.
Patty?
The deadline hasn't really changed. We just don't have enough information to give them, so they're taking what we can provide them at this point.
Okay. We lost most of our public. Lori, you want to say anything else?
I feel like I should.
That's okay.
Because I'm here. They're here. You know, I was sitting here thinking, it's kind of funny somehow.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, somehow I'm involved with all three of these topics in some way on your agenda today. Thank you for the support of that trailhead project. It's great to see a community that's actively engaged in the trails and supporting the trails and identifying projects that are really good for the community and the residents. And, you know, it's been really good. Jason, Jason, I think, really covered a lot of the concerns that people brought up. You know, we had a little bit of heads-up on some of those, and I do think this project addresses a number of things that came up during that discussion. The other thing is, it was a good opportunity to educate the public. You know, I think a few of them went away realizing, oh, wait, I don't actually have access to the trails. A lot of what we're doing, you know, as NTN, we are still a small organization, I was kind of reveling in my powerful entity there for a second, but the reality is, we're still in a position of a lot of reactionary things instead of proactive things. You know, the land off the Ash Road, you know, we're reacting, again, to a sale. We have some opportunity now, you know, Eagle Mine is providing some funding through Lake Superior Community Partnership, so we can do some broader planning, so I think more of the community, such as yourselves, will be able to recognize where we have trails that are at risk potentially. You know, we still work with 45 different landowners across our trail systems, across eight different systems. That's a lot for a trail organization to manage. And any one of those could cut off access for something a lot of people depend on, you know, rely on for their trail access. So, this planning process that's underway will hopefully help identify more of those opportunities before they become potentially tragic events that take away access. So that process is underway, and I think there'll be more around that coming up in the months and days ahead. The International Mountain Bicycling Association has been engaged at a higher level to help with that visioning and planning process. I'm hoping for a little bit more detailed plan, specifically for the Hartwood within the township and the city, so we can envision maybe future trails that could exist and how they interconnect, and growing that system too, because to be honest, a second campground going in on the west side of that, which is outside, it's in Sands Township, so it's outside of the city and the township, that's going to bring more users, again, to a trail where there really isn't that much trail out on this end of the system. You know, so we've, we've got to be looking at those opportunities and growing access, increasing that connectivity, because it does spread out the users, and when you spread out the users, you minimize some of the conflict that, that we're seeing in, in tight areas within the trails. So, anyway, thank you for supporting that, and I'm watching both these other projects as they move along. The Heritage Silos has been a good partner, we've adjusted the trail there to that development, so we know that's coming. And then, of course, the Forestville intersection, I think, is of interest for many, many reasons, so, lots going on, you guys are busy. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
That was Lori Hawsworth for the record. Okay, you want to review our motions, Randy?
Okay, so the first motion was to approve the agenda as presented, that was approved. The second motion was to approve the application for the MNRTF development grant, that was approved, roll call vote. The third motion was to consider the heritage silos LLC PUD development documents, and that was approved, and that's it.
Any other comments from everybody?
Just only, Lynn, as again, I just urge those residents, again, for property ownership. If they have that property to the east and they're using it right now, and I would very seriously consider talking to the whole neighborhood to either purchase that property or do something, because if there's a development that gets planned, and I don't know, I don't know anything about that area, but it could be gone tomorrow, and then they'll lose that, all that property that they've used for years and years. And the only way you can control that is to own it.
Right. That's why we try to buy property when we can or get involved with it to secure it. Linda?
Well, it's interesting to me, and maybe I don't understand this real well, but if the property owners are granting access, are they granting individual access to certain people, or are they granting carte blanche access to anyone who goes through it? So that whole thing about we can use it, but you can't, doesn't really make any sense to me, that's what I'll share. Also, do I understand there's a state road back there that's open for anyone to use?
County road.
County road. The public can use. And that's not going to change.
It does go to a gate where you enter the well field, so you've got to be able to turn around and it's not approved.
Yeah, so, so do you know, I, I don't believe, and I could be wrong, that the people that own the property are selecting who can cross it and who cannot.
Lynn?
Yes, sir.
And it's my understanding too, that any land that is in Commercial Forest Act, anybody can walk in there, they can hunt in there, but they cannot anybody can walk in there, they can hunt in there, but they cannot bring a motorized vehicle, like a four-wheeler or anything, without the landowner's permission. Is that correct, Roger?
I haven't read that in a couple of years, but I believe that is correct. And just on the other, a landowner can grant.
Right.
Individual permission to adjacent properties and so forth.
So adjacent property?
No, to anybody.
To anybody.
But it would have to be individually.
Yeah, they can pick and choose who they want to give permission to.
Right. Not a blanket, you can, anybody can go, they, it's all, my understanding was all had to be individually.
Well, the landowner is in the driver's seat there. If the landowner wants to create a public park, so to speak, of granting everybody in the world permission, they would have that prerogative to do that. Few landowners do that, however. More common is that a property owner will inquire, can I use your land to walk my dog or to ride my bike, or whatever? And the property owner would then grant that, and a shrewd property owner would issue a license. And a license is written permission that is revocable anytime the property owner wishes to revoke it.
And do it?
At least that spells out what the terms of that use are.
And them in doing so, get a tax break.
Well, that goes, we're talking two different things. If it's, see, if our property, you get a tax break.
Yes.
But just allowing individual persons to use your property results in no tax break.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's 30%, 25% or 30%. Ernie?
I got a notice, something to do with a, some change that the State Supreme Court is talking about liability and that, and if it goes through, township or the communities could be liable for some action that they don't do now. Is this something that we have to worry about now, or that, or what?
Roger and I have been talking about this for a couple of days, that you came from MTA, right?
Yes.
Talking about, yeah. So he was gracious enough to give me a whole bunch of backup information. The deadline is this Friday.
Right.
You know, and I, so I asked him, is this something we need to add to the agenda? How important is this? MTA made it look like it was the end of the world if we didn't do it. So Roger, if you want to gently explain to them why you think it's not imperative, I mean, he said, we can put it on the agenda, we can talk about it, it'll take a minute and a half, but I knew this was going to be an involved meeting, and I said, if it's not urgent, let's just, we can put it on next week.
The Michigan Supreme Court is considering a rule change. There are court rules that govern the practice of law, basically, in any court system. And as of right now, well, since 2002, there's been a rule in place that allows a party to litigation who's unhappy with a ruling relating to governmental immunity to have an immediate appeal to the Court of Appeals, without having to wait until the rest of the case is over with, as in most other circumstances. Normally, if there's a case pending, you can't appeal it by right until the case is over with, until the trial judge has ruled on all the issues. At some point that, well, in 2002, that changed, and the Supreme Court is now wondering how well that really is working. And should we revert it back to the pre-2002 status, which would mean that if there's a lawsuit pending and it involves governmental immunity, and one of the parties doesn't like the ruling, can they go to the Court of Appeals immediately with an automatic appeal? They're proposing to maybe revoke that automatic right. However, it does not change anything whatsoever with regard to governmental immunity that a township, or a city, or a village, or a county enjoys. The township can only be sued for negligence or tort liability in certain limited circumstances, like if you have a dangerous condition of a public building, and somebody is injured by it, that's one exception. If the township owns a vehicle and they run over a pedestrian, that's another exception. There are limited exceptions when you can be sued. Those are not changing at all. The only thing they're proposing to change is the timing of when an appeal could take place. Let's say the township is sued, and we claim that we're entitled to governmental immunity because it doesn't fall, the claim doesn't fall within one of the statutory exceptions. If the trial court, the circuit judge ruled against Marquette Township, we could automatically appeal that right now, the day after the adverse ruling. Instead, if this rule is revoked, we'd have to wait until the case is over, other issues are decided, or we can file an application for leave to appeal, which is just asking the Court of Appeals permission to file an immediate appeal right here, right now, because it would be a waste of resources and expenses and taxpayer funds, and the court's time, for that matter, to wait until the case was done. So it's not even taking away the right to ask permission to appeal right here, right now. That right would still exist. So the scope of what the proposal is, is really quite narrow. And MTA is asking everybody to write, to sign or subscribe to a form letter that they've circulated, and would it be better to have the current rule in place than have it revoked? Absolutely, because you want the right to an automatic appeal. But at the end of the day, how much difference that's really ever going to make to Marquette Township is about that much, probably, because in a significant percentage of cases, the Court of Appeals will be inclined to grant an application for leave to appeal, so that the appeal could be heard now, anyway. And the other scenario is, if in the same case, a lawsuit was filed and we won on the motion saying that we're entitled to governmental immunity, that would normally end the case. So that's a final order, and we would never, as a township, appeal a favorable decision, but the plaintiff, the person doing the suing, would have the right to file an appeal when there's a final order issued. Well, that is a final order if it ends the case, so it's not changing anything from that perspective, either. So, long story short, could you have circumstances where there are multiple issues so that, and the Court of Appeals denies an application for leave to appeal, so you're stuck defending a lawsuit in circuit court until the case is over? Yes, there are conceivable circumstances where if you didn't, you know, weren't interested in going home to eat, I could explain to you, but they're not going to come up very often, and I can't think of, I was, I was trying to, as I was typing the email, think of, in the 30 years I've been doing this for Marquette Township, whether we've ever had a case that this would affect. And the only one I could come up with is the one with the former fire chief. That one was granted in part on governmental immunity issues. But again, the township won that. So it was up to the plaintiff to determine whether to file an appeal or not, and because we won it, there was a final order dismissing the lawsuit, and the plaintiff had the right to appeal that suit, anyway. So even in that scenario, it didn't directly impact what's being proposed in this, in this rule change. So the Supreme Court occasionally extends the deadline because they want certain issues to be commented on. And in fact, they sent out a thing last year, this deadline is not like something that just came up, this was, was set forth by the Supreme Court sometime last year. So while the MTA is just disseminating this, I also got this through the, because I am an MTA member, this is not something brand-new. I don't know where it's been all of these months, but they're suddenly realizing, well, the deadline is coming up, we'd like everybody to respond. If that gets extended, I would still encourage a response opposing repeal of that rule, because it's better to have it than not to have it. But if the Supreme Court says, no, we're going to make that change, then I don't know that it's a real crisis for Marquette Township. I think the impact is going to be relatively low.
So if it does end up getting extended, we can always formulate a letter, and like Roger said, are they going to pay a lot of attention to a bunch of template letters with the signature? You know? So if it did get extended, we might want to write our own letter, have it be at least a little bit more impactful.
And I am sure that there are a number of townships around the state of Michigan who are MTA members who are sending the letter. And I might add that the letter doesn't really address the issues that the Supreme Court was specifically requesting be addressed during, at the public hearing, during the public commentary anyway. So is it going to make much difference, as the supervisor just questioned, whether they receive 349 of those or 348 of those? I doubt it.
Thank you, Roger.
I was actually going to mention. Explanation, but it wasn't.
I told them that I would bring it up with you guys.
We're done with that for now, right?
Yes, because the deadline is April 1st.
I got one last motion.
Yay.
Well, we just, as long as board member comment's done.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Do you want me to talk anymore?
No, no, that's fine.
Remember, our next meeting is Wednesday, the 5th, next, a week from tomorrow.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
6:22.
Well, that was a quick support, wasn't it?